Good morning.
Good morning.
It's Monday. Is this Commissioner Church? No. How is the old today? A P I. Okay, good morning, everybody. This is Monday, May the 13th, 2019, and I call upon the County Commissioners Court for Order. Today, we have James Yalder from Morrison Avenue in Carson Church to do the indication. So feel free to stand and remain seated in your place.
I'm rather grateful that we live in a community where prayer still matters. And we're able to call upon your name, and people taking care of important business in our county. We thank you for that. We thank you for a new week. We thank you for blessings of rain you've given, the lesson on fire concerns. We're also grateful for sunshine today. Help us to be thankful for all the gifts that you give. We pray for these commissioners, for each of these who sit in this circle. We pray for their, just give them a sense of their purpose, give them unity, give them the ability to govern wisely. We pray for our county, for all of the things that happen here, and that in all ways we can be just a group of people mindful of you and where our blessings come from. Thank you for your goodness to us, for all of your mercies in Jesus' name.
Amen. For introductions to the Friday of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
First thing on the agenda today is rock and roll minutes on April 22nd, April 26th, and April 30th. Commissioners Court meeting, and we should have corrections again. Let's recognize number two, vouchers. We will not be giving vouchers today as we continue all the other days payroll. Vouchers, we will have a special meeting on Thursday morning at nine o'clock to pay bills. And today, the amount for payroll is $1,674,000.
I make a motion that we approve payroll as presented.
Sure.
That's the motion, and the second on favor, Judge. Four to zero. Number three, insurance reports. Okay. Is there anything? First back. Fifty-two years, nothing unusual. So recognized. Number four, Emerald Convention and District Council to hear report from the Emerald Convention and District Council. Just one, how are you today, sir?
I'm wonderful, and I can bring this. You go up to the screeching bolt here.
Oh.
I'm not going to pick you up. Nationally, last week, people in our district were celebrating National Tourism Week. And in past years, I've come to you, and you've done a proclamation. And this year, we just decided we won't give any proclamations. So rather than that, we just wanted to come and tell you what's going on in your county as it relates to tourism. And the first thing I want to do is thank you again for hosting the West Texas County Commissioners and Commissioners Group. As far as we can tell right now, the economic impact of hosting that convention was close to $300,000. It was also the first convention ever to be held in Hotchtown, since you had an event there that one night. There wasn't even a game, but you showed how the place could be used. I never see the use like that is, so it's kind of fun to be part of that event. It was outstanding to have everyone there in the stadium. I should also point out that that event was one of 52 conventions that we booked at the Embassy Civic Center combination since before the, just before the Embassy opened. So that whole economic driver of adding a convention center, which is how this really worked. Matter of fact, we use West Texas County Judges Convention as an example, because back in 2015, we looked at bidding on that, and we weren't allowed to because we didn't have a convention center hotel. So this is an example of what happens when you finally have the facility so you can move forward. I would also urge all of you and all of county bullies, and since you approved all vouchers as you just did, to, when someone is looking to spend money to leave town, to go to a convention somewhere else, anywhere, particularly in Texas, stop them for a second. Say, is this something that we can have here and have around? And then let's, just ask them to contact us, and we do all the heavy lifting. We'll check it out and see if we can do that. But whatever movement is, we can help bring that back as great economic impact to the citizens. I, you should also know that there are a little over 8,300 people in Potter County alone that are deployed of the tourist industry, that's what they work in. So in 2017, the last numbers we have, about $27 million in local taxes raised from just visiting public. And the amount of money directly spent, and I always want to emphasize, this is, I hate multipliers. I hate, you know, the only sound that made on numbers. This is actually, I've got a dollar, and we give it to you, direct money spent in Potter County in 2017 was over $755 million by tourists, which is up $293 million since 2000. So if somebody tells you we're not in the tourist business, where did we tend to be? Before I was here, I had the honor of serving as the Director of the South Potter Avenue Police Bureau. And in 2017, the people in our whole city of Emerald spent $500 million more than they expected in South Potter Avenue. So tourism is a big business to us. I appreciate the support you have always shown us, and I know you do that. So I just want to come here and thank you and give you a couple of stats. So I'm listening to someone ask a question.
I have a question. Why are you doing coming here from South Potter and Emerald?
Well, I'm looking around, why am I not going to be here?
I thought maybe it might be the weather here.
Yeah, that was it, that was it. I miss snow. I grew up in North Dakota, so I don't.
Well, thank you for the work that you did for that event. It was very seamless for all of us to participate in it, so thank you.
Well, the honor is definitely a staff thing. I just come around, I kind of stand out from size, but the staff really gets it done.
We just got back from a conference in Lubbock, a public school, and almost, I'm a little sorry to go Lubbock. Had a lot of judges come up, and said it was really, really good to be in, and I hope to be happy again, so.
Thank you. We're trying. All those same lines, kudos to the abstention.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
The church did excellent, excellent, so he and his wife, they really.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Nate, appreciate it. Okay, number five, certificate of completion to recognize a certificate of completion for open meetings that our judges started, so recognized. Number six, the postory contract, to consider and act upon the working of postory contract application, Emerald National Bank. I told Chris you could take this, but I won't let him talk about it. Okay, so you should have in your packet the backup. We had two applications, and from Happy State and from Emerald National Bank. And so the committee met, and we did our due diligence, went through both contracts and made figures, and I listed on my memo there to you guys that because of calculation of interest paid, A being collateralized at 102%, and all current future services were free, and also because of improvement in past performance. So my recognition is that we.
How close was that to state in the bidding process?
You know, in fact, it's very complimentary, because you can tell the market's changing, and things have really gotten better for us. But with the money we have, no one wanted us in the past, and this time, it was really a competitive bid. We were very pleased that we had received it, and so we don't think that in the future.
Clean. Does this include the clerks' contracts?
Yes, it does. And all of that may be written out, and you'll see that when we actually get the contract.
Okay.
Thank you. And one thing that I included with Happy State Bank was helping with the expansive changing over, and so that was a major reason we did, that we did this. Thank you. Any other motion?
I don't make a motion to approve the postory contract application at Emerald National Bank.
I have a motion, and it's taken on favor, Judge. For to be read, thank you. Number seven, emergency equipment purchase, to approve the emergency purchase of Dell storage array with an expansion enclosure to enable restoration of Odyssey while preserving existing warehouse funds of approximately $30,700, which we're going to fund now.
This is the service that we have that are cut now. We need to just save coffee and coffee, just for it. Odyssey in particular. There says servers, and we still need to keep the ones that we have, and just, it takes is what it comes to. So if we want to get some storage space, we can move that stuff off, that's really what this is about.
So this is just for Odyssey?
No, it's for kind of everything that we have, so that we can have, keep the copies of all the different services that we have. We've needed some storage for a while, it's just.
Seems to be a good time to pass that.
Well, yeah, we really do need it for several of the services.
So Raymond, is it fair to say that this additional storage is part of the recovery process? And so if we buy this storage, this allows us to kind of bring systems up more quickly, because you have kind of a dedicated space?
Yes.
To build these files back up?
Yes, absolutely. So Odyssey in particular, we have a lot of service for Odyssey, and it takes a lot of space. So in order to do that, to rebuild them, you don't have the space to do that, but it's not specific for Odyssey, but it is for, that's a big one, it's good.
I make a motion that we approve, well, I guess, Judge, do we need to approve this? It was an emergency purchase, do we need a motion still?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the emergency purchase of Dell storage funds to come from general fund amounts.
I have a motion, and it's taken on favor, Judge. For to be read, thank you. Number eight, FY18 comprehensive annual audit report to recognize our county's CAFR fiscal year 2017-2018. Is the large?
Yes. I think the page you were quoting probably most interesting is page two, the figure showing the different amounts for the various stories.
So Yohan, I just hope that it's before we continue.
Carrie, since we just, you know, got this strike of four corps, are there any findings through the audit process? Is there anything we need to be mindful of?
There is a separate communication that was in the back that will, it's just a kind of an executive summary, and it does list all the general things that we laid, or general items that we made, so.
Okay. And this was a delay this year, right, from the audit?
It was. It's actually out there, possibly, since then, we're going to make the audit after the audit process.
So we should expect a new bidding process when this herself already is.
Already going. And then this felt honorable, just saying. No excuse. Okay, thanks, Carrie. That was recognized, only. Number nine, repairs to existing terracotta wall at Santa Fe Building. Consider and act upon repairs to be made at one wall area, approximately 40 feet long, 23 tall. Repairs to enclose ceiling replacement, Ms. Lanes reporting. Ms. Lanes, you're just making me read this, aren't you?
Well, that's what they say.
Hatching and cleaning, repairs to be made by Phoenix One Restoration and Restoration Inc., worth a sum of $19,680. Funds for repairs to come out of Santa Fe Building appear to count. This is the old John Scramble Bureau Garden, correct?
It is the Bureau Garden, okay.
It was, it was all just a joke.
So. You're right, from southeast.
Okay.
Southeast corner of Santa Fe, where the grassy area is.
External.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's, the way we found it, the problem was inside where the security has their area, the wall was kind of wet. So we got cleaning, and the water was coming from the outside. So went outside, started looking around. It's called spaulding, and that terracotta is kind of, it's just cracking, and it's kind of off. And as we're looking, it's just a whole length of that wall, like 40 foot, and then it goes on up. It's the wall that we're actually looking at, which is the pedal down. So I talked to Matt, with the dark rounds, and if I was to pay with it, I'd like to do something different with that grass right there, because those sprinklers come on, and the spot is three, and it kind of loops it around and just saturates the wall. I don't know if we'll take the grass out, or zero escape, concrete, or whatever. That, that'll come after, we just need to get that repaired, so.
Isn't that where people put the smoke also, the smoke around that corner there?
There are some people who smoke over there. It looks like it was meant to be kind of a core reaction.
And it was, to begin with, if people walk on the grass, they've made a trail, or they don't walk around the sidewalk. So why don't you just take all that out, and just put some stepping stones and hold it?
That was kind of where I was at.
Kind of like the parking lot in the parking lot, walking in the grass and there's.
We just want to take a little bit of, I'm not sure much of rock is on, so. Off the year. About the time I began working for, that was an 11-month walk through the previous meetings, or work up on the lower level of the roof. And I went through, and it looked, and it was still bubbling, so they're going to repair it, so that, what it is, where they patched the, I, they didn't get all the chemical off. And so some of the paint, it looks like a mess, paint, it looks like where it kind of bubbles up, it was wet, kind of under washing machine. So they're going to fix all of that for free, and then, I guess, free is kind of a, it's an open interpretation, so. Anyhow, they're going to, there's several repairs, but the cost is, we just forgot what it was.
Carrie, how much do we have in the East Santa Fe Building to repair it? Oh, down the line, I'm sorry, down the line. Had it.
It's closer to seven.
Okay. But don't you have a special account just for the terracotta? Aren't you working, don't you have something special?
We used to, or it's a terracotta repair that was done, and so we go with this, and I can sell you the numbers that I have. With this, with the money going towards the building tower, we will still have enough to operate and do all of our building repairs. We don't, we have the rest of this.
We have ongoing repetitive maintenance that, is this what, is that a post that, or is that just something that? What happened with this?
I wouldn't say it's a pain of the head. It's supposed to do everything, all the best, supposed to make it everything every day. And I didn't want to deal with those sort of problems. Renee, who was working, who actually found the issue, called me downstairs, we got to look at it, and then I think it was the exterior, so we walked upstairs, we were going upstairs, and I thought, okay, so we're going to go with terracotta repair, maybe a bit sugar. The reason for Phoenix One is that's who, that's who get all the repairs before we first went off about other guys.
I'm necessary to request for another process that could be used?
Not, not aware of. I can look, I can get other explanations. I guess I'm a little apprehensive to get someone else in, because they may say, oh, sure, we can fix that. The reason is Phoenix One has kind of an upper hand, is they specialize in historic restoration, toter restoration. They did the courthouse, they did the Santa Fe, they have a portfolio, you know, all over the country, of this, this particular kind of pair. So if I get it, we can all, whoever did the historic repair, I don't know, it's the same quote. But I don't like, that's one of the specialties. Makes me want to go into terracotta repair.
Yeah. And so we have to keep it like that, because the historic value of the building, right? We can't do another, another treatment on the outside, we have to keep it terracotta, is that correct?
I don't think unless you use historical dollars, which is different for the courthouse. I don't remember Santa Fe being in that category of Santa Fe, but I. Yeah, it's different than.
It's a little bit different, but. You can't change the facade of that building. Yep, just.
I make a motion that we approve replacement of the terracotta from Phoenix One as the vendor, funds to come from Santa Fe Building now here.
Sir.
I'll open the motion, and second on favor, Judge. Four to zero.
Thank you.
Number 10, Potter County Fire Department to consider the purchase of the installed fire apparatus from the Franco Fire Department and the remount of an existing apparatus body on the new chassis and take action since necessary.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Good.
Hi, I'm good. This is our, updating our fleet. What we're closing here is, we have found a demo of the top truck that we walked, it's a Rosenback Timber Wolf, of which we already have one, and we light the truck. And then the second half of it is, we are going, they are going to fit a new chassis, and with the chassis there available, we will send in our current Timber Wolf to them, and have the chassis on that truck traded out. Yes, we'll put the, take the apparatus off the current chassis and put it on the new one. The current Timber Wolf we have is the one that the paint guys drive on every day. It's, it's got high mileage, and it's a coming maintenance problem. So we'll clear up a maintenance problem with this, and basically have two new trucks out of these.
Question, I just want to make sure I'm following the numbers. So the last page of the backup shows a total of $118,000, but the very first page has a $5,000 annual delivery charges.
That's the HGAC contract, the way it's written, is kind of odd. The demo truck is, is approximately $390,000, and when you swap out the new chassis, and the swap out will be approximately $210,000.
Okay.
So it comes out of that total, that 598, 995, with the two of them.
Okay. So we're purchasing, swapping out, and so roughly, the difference is what will come out of our budget, is that right?
This is, this will all come out of here.
Okay, okay.
Oh, how I wish that human beings could trade chassis.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Not a black thing.
Great science fiction. There's one really good one.
So Brad, how close are we getting to obtaining the comfortability in our, 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 our fire department, our fire protection apparatus, putting up these kinds of stations, etc., are we, are that pretty close?
We're not, we're getting close. This one is, this, when we exchange the chassis on this, and we're going to go through the water maintenance headaches, and our attention is to turn it into, for this truck, and I'll take out another maintenance problem we've got, continue to work on our worst maintenance problems as we go.
And this one was included in the budget process?
Motion.
I'm going to go to the demo fire apparatus from Franco, fire equipment and remount, and just be kind of, ride on a new chassis and then take.
I got you. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, and second on favor, Judge. Or zero. And you can.
If it's not on the agenda, the bird bait expired yesterday.
I thought we had already, Ray.
I don't believe we ever actually.
A couple of meetings ago.
It's definitely off now.
It's expired, it's not moving.
It's expired, it's, it's gone, and that's how it needs to be right now.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, number 11, handle auto burglary and theft unit, to get needed to use, to consider and act upon the regulations of the grant request of the auto burglary and theft commission, I've already entered this event to require a grant official to see us. Good morning.
Good morning. The resolution will make Judge Stan offer us in person, it will make me the program director, and it will make Carrie Hood the financial officer. And we're asking for that to happen. The grant is a little over a million dollars. We'll pay it to you, and some interesting numbers, since September of 15, for three years, there have been 3,792 vehicles stolen in Emerald, 3,121 of them, that's 78% of them, had the keys in the car. 1,104, which is 27%, were left running.
So, so you can honestly say that we make a lot of use of it for.
If you are doing that, you are making it extremely risky. And I should say, auto theft is one of the crimes that is going to be a least resistant thing. If you've taken precautions, then take everything out, there's not any place that's going to lock your car. If you lock it up, got stuff out, it won't even burn, but that's it, if you've taken stuff out, and it'll move on to somewhere else for. And.
There's most people.
All I can say is, Lord, help Emerald, but it's not, but Emerald is not in it alone, out of the top five states for having keys left in the car. Texas ranks third. We've got California, excuse me, Texas ranks second, California's ahead of us, about 2,000 cases.
So Raymond, is this a new grant, or is this the existing grant that we have in place?
This is for the application for the new grant.
Okay.
We've got, we're putting together a grant draft plan, so this will be for that.
And this is about the fifth year that we've had this grant, right?
Yep, that, this will be the.
So this is an existing grant?
This is the yes, now we're required.
And this, is this the same grant that's in collaboration with Emerald Police Department, and they apply for a piece of it?
ABTPA, yeah, ABTPA, that's auto burglary, the auto burglary that we're preparing this time to damn the innocent. And then we've got paying a lot of theft units that's based over Emerald Police Department.
Just curious, is that note, so probably, but I'm not sure if you chart this out, but how much of that do you think that are, when they leave the keys running? Is it typically in the morning, when the, when the car is up, and they go back, and they do the rest?
Fairly. I would say something between the time, the vast amount of time that that would be, about. The folks, folks have gone in and got it, there was one vehicle they were telling me about, it was running, the door was open, and it was front of a convenience store. Then he shut the door. So what I can tell you is, folks, if you leave your keys in your car, you're just fixing to be a statistician. You're going to be a statistician if you leave the keys in your car. And I can tell you, sometimes they kind of talk to them, about people, and they go, so you're trying to tell me it's my fault? Well, it may not be your whole fault, but you're sure encouraging the effort.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution for the grant request of the. I make a motion that we approve the resolution for the grant request of the auto burglary and theft prevention and designate uh Judge Tanner as the, what is your title?
Authorized.
Authorized agent, authorized official.
I have a motion in second, on favor of Michigan or zero. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, number twelve, R F V one-one-eight-one dash one-nine parking lot repairs and concrete work. To consider and act upon awarding R F V, is it R F V, is that correct? Okay, okay. Number one-one-eight-one dash one-nine Tri-State General Contract Group with lowest in responsive theater. Work to be performed with the Potter County Law Enforcement, be for maintenance garage, love to come from capital funds for the L E C. Chris, you wanna take this or?
I don't know.
You have that case or? Doesn't match. Now I'm flipped.
I mean, you probably have. Basically, we spoke about it a few quarters ago. Uh it's asphalt, it's, it has vertical center. Uh Chris, have we, uh, question? Six, four, five. I never get it, I just guess. I can't, uh, Tri-State was, was the lowest.
So this is at the new um L E C building? And did we have Rowan Bridge do that work originally? And this is now to come over, help me understand that.
We had another contractor uh come in and take concrete in some spots in the asphalt and some others.
Okay.
And I understand there was some uh back and forth on whether it should be concrete or asphalt. So it was thus settles, it, it was asphalt and it was really known to say, hey, you know what? We should have concrete, so now it's.
So it's a move from asphalt to concrete? And it's the seventy-three thousand eight fourteen? And that's gonna come from the capital line item account that's set aside for the L E C? Before we use those dollars that are left to pay off the.
So we're, we're pretty confident that this is what we need at, sorry.
It should have been, yes, in retrospect, it should have been done that way to begin with.
Yes.
Yeah. I just have, on the bid tabulation sheet on our chosen vendor, Tri-State, um on the signed addendum, it's rated no, and the certificate of liability insurance, it's rated no.
Correct. They did um no date on the bid of the acknowledgement of the signed addendum.
Okay.
Um and then generally certificate of like, or before you work to get done, I need that certificate. And they, they agreed to that.
So they have it, they just haven't provided the documentation? And that was considered a complete bid? I'm, I'm just interested because a lot of times if all of that is not completed upfront and provided in the bid packet, sometimes it's thrown out for administrative, like not completeness.
The biggest question was the signed addendum.
Okay.
And I spoke to uh Kat and she said that since they did acknowledge it on their, on their uh bid map, that we could, we can take that.
And the same for the insurance not being on file?
In, insurance is generally not the deal breaker.
Okay.
Uh it's just something that we ask for them to, to provide. Uh but again, if they don't provide, if they haven't provided before, it's important.
I would, my only kind of caution is um it's a little uncharted territory, right? So just to make sure that we, we um provide that same kind of flexibility to others that are bidding on different projects, right? So I just, I've not always heard that. Sometimes I've heard, it's not complete, so it was thrown out and didn't make the cut. So I just wanna make sure we're being consistent across all vendors countywide.
Yes.
Anything else? Give me, I have a motion.
Do, do we move the, uh, and you see, you're right. If it could be a match, if I made a comparison, it was kind of smart.
I have a motion in second, on favor of Michigan or zero. Thank you, ma'am.
Our, part of the scope is, is to hit this gun up immediately. To make sure we're not down. Who's crazy?
You said crazy things? Not crazy, Kevin, of the way. Okay, number thirteen, R F Q one-one-seven-nine dash one-nine Architectural Services for District Courthouse. Consider an active bottom warning, R F Q number one-one-seven-nine dash one-nine to Helmet, Obada, and Casablanca. Also known as H O K, as the highest evaluated firm. So very happy to announce that H O K won the bid on architectural. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
No, we had six um architect firms submit qualifications. By far, the uh H O K was the best, highest ranked firm of all.
And Jeff and Carter are here today, do y'all want to say anything? You just wanna stand up to be recognized, or you want to do a little jig, what would you like?
As a firm and also as a set teammate right here, the state of Texas over the last ten years, there's not another leadership team that has done as much courthouse work for the state of Texas than Kirk. I let the master of design, the period use, double counting the same for fifty-four million dollars. I'm trying to be shaped them out to say thirty-five million dollars on this particular one. I think our number's for seventy million dollars for our previous plan that been executed and was at eight dollars for eight. So uh I've been doing this fourteen years directly for large, major civic projects around the nation. And Kirk, by far, is the most accurate um project manager, project leader, cost estimator. Many of these civic projects that have worked with around the entire country are two major firms. So we're here, we're committed. Uh as a company, we've designed over twenty-five hundred ward rooms. In the last five years alone, and our six design sets, justice design sets, we've done over five billion dollars with the projects. All this right out of Texas and Dallas here. We're honored to be here. We both read the report.
When are you gonna have it done? As soon as we can, excited to get started and uh blushing a little bit, thank you for that. But um uh just really happy to be here, really appreciate the opportunity and looking forward to get going. And uh hoping to meet today with, with Chris and start the contract process, get that going and uh get underway, I would expect, well, hopefully starting to, uh, as soon, as soon as we get that contracts.
I was looking at maybe late in twenty.
Hey, all right, we're, we're ready for it, isn't it?
I'll just say, no, I have to, I have to, we're still on the court today, to just quick visit, if you can, okay.
All right, and what is it?
Quick question, since we haven't actually voted on it yet. Um what is the percentage for the firm that is selected in the contract? What will that include? The total project cost, there's only a percentage of, what, what is that?
That's what.
That's what being that, do you have a range? Or they're bidding not knowing how much they'll get paid?
No, this was for the qualification.
Just the qualification, okay, all right. And then um there is a line item in here on the tabulation sheet about uh previous experience with a third-party construction manager. Judge, I know you've had a different kind of project scheme in mind for the district courts building. Uh is, is that Kirk, that's gonna be the project, construction project manager? Or what, what will that look like?
No, we're not gonna have a project manager.
Okay.
I'm kidding. Uh no, we're not gonna have a project manager. We're just gonna, Nicholas is gonna be the go-to guy, walking with these guys and with the construction crew. Am I correct?
Yep. So we won't have a county kind of representation, I think?
Yeah, definitely.
But as the go-to, not as a project manager?
We have, we have, you both base the project manager.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then um there are, again, two other line items on this tab, tabulation sheet. It's just always something I caution against, right? So there's probably the third or fourth down, understanding the project requirements and design approach, and then the fourth, the ability to design the needs of the county. Um H O K was obviously who was selected under the fifty thousand dollar price point to really kinda get their hands around the project. So when I look at tabulation sheets, I just, I think we always have to be careful when there's a line item that just gives, you know, someone, I would expect them to score high on this because they did the original study, right? So I just, I always caution against it because I look across vendors countywide and just to make sure you're being consistent. Um I think a lot of times on the outside, you'll get a perception of, well, you know, the deal's done before it's done because you stay under the fifty thousand procurement price point. I would expect you to score high on that. So just in terms of processes moving forward, anytime I see these particular line items that I know, you know, give vendors inside a let up, I just, I just try to caution against that. Not that, not that I disagree with the tabulation. I um, I, I see the work that they do and so I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that at all, just maybe the process.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh move to uh approve was the uh R F Q one-one-seven-nine dash one-nine to public Bata and Casablanca as the highest evaluated.
Second. I have a motion in second, on favor of Michigan or zero. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, a document item to consider and act upon following the law amendments, maintenance and facilities in term of management of Pamela Porter, which is code in one, effective May two, twenty nineteen, and in Road and Bridge, no enforcement of Colby Shape, of Summer Mower, effective May fifteen, twenty nineteen.
Move to approve the document on this. Stay in the way, Judge. Sorry.
I have a motion in second, on favor of Michigan or zero. Potter County Projects, Nicholas. Okay. I think the chair, tell the chair what I.
Morning. Uh we have an issue that came up last week that we've kind of started thinking about. I know that we have some money left in our, our, our building sign. Uh I would really like to go forth and, and understand. Uh but we also have an issue that came up that we noticed last week that we have no handicap access into our building. As far as push buttons, open doors.
Into the L E C?
Yes. There's nothing like that. And without going into a whole lot of the HIPAA things, which I think everybody will know, talking about moving in and going in, that probably will be coming back in the winter, but we don't have access to our building. And so we've got, we probably need to fix that. I don't know why that was overlooked as, or done, you know, that way.
Do you think with the A D A that would, if it was, if they not approved it?
They came out there and we had to fix some things while it was there. I believe this, and we came about, so. So I don't really know, I'm not asking for the back doors, those are, but, you know, even though we have employee, it affects the public too, you know, and our building. So, so I think we need to look at that and do some, do that side.
Do we have any, any idea of what the cost to do?
I don't know, I mean, I haven't even looked, I haven't started here, so I just wanted to come and ask for that. It's either that or we might have to do it somewhere along in the budget. They're gonna have to, person to ask, call me, come let us know.
Yeah, we can check with the general contractors. I mean, I think it would just be nice to know the backstory and then who's ultimately responsible for, for paying it. I don't hear a disagreement if it needs to be done, right? But that's very surprising.
That's important, but I think I'd probably delay it for that.
I don't even know when, I don't know when they came in to inspection, were the doors on, were they open? Did they just go past and they come in from the back?
Yeah, you could just dig into that.
I'll dig into that. And then we have a R S Ms who we go through for all of our countywide.
What is ours?
Uh that's just the name. They come to us, all of our locks.
Okay.
Uh I don't know.
We could make some.
I know, I did. Anyhow, they did, they get all the keys, all the hardware, so the, we can get with them and get a.
Cost estimate.
A cost estimate, but we don't have to do both doors, just one side, some of the same thing, so we can work.
I just, I, I mean, I just wanted to get that done before we send that. I, I trust me, rather, rather than, but this could be an issue, not only for us, but for the public. I'm surprised we have to run across it all.
I know. And, and Nicholas, just like you know, this Potter County Projects, number fifty, we will take the word head off of there. It's just been something on there for about, what, fifty years? So we'll, we'll take that off.
See, I know you guys are calling me a brain.
What if we put head honcho? Okay, okay. All right, Jill, we're, it's just five hundred and one people, that's all we can give the information today.
We got eighty-two people.
Eighty-two people.
Sorry. It's been pretty good, I think, I think a lot of it has to do with the probation. So that was some improvement.
That's one Terry, the group started this question here. It's because we're really, nobody.
I don't know what the numbers are from that. Maybe call them.
Carrie, do you have an opportunity, is Terry sitting with you, about how many people he has online, or is it thing on right now?
It's expensive, he has to experience. I don't remember the law, the board, John, Mr. Chris.
Okay.
We have these ones.
Yeah. Let's share our. Number seven, scene county insurance, I agree.
Well, uh we did finally uh get an estimate on repair of the defense centers work. Um and it does come under, when we were paid by our insurance, our insurance paid us thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. Uh and the estimate came in at twenty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. So that's kind of the only insurance thing that's in the ranking. That just, they go up with the district funding. It is, it is. Yeah, there's some plumbing that needs to be. Gas line.
Okay. Number eighteen, there's nothing, agenda items for next time, just a quarter of a minute. You mentioned that here versus anything at nine o'clock, is that true? You can play about two minutes. Uh any agenda items for next time?
Not an agenda item, but maybe just a quick update since we've got elected officials and department heads in the audience today. So I um, I took the liberty and kind of just did a two-page um recap on where we are with I T and that process, and so everybody up here got a copy of that with this afternoon. You'll get a copy via email from me. But I think the most important thing that you'll find very helpful is the back of this. I don't expect you to be able to read this, I'm just showing this to you. It's a little Excel kind of document where it shows every single software and the latest update. So Brandon and I built this spreadsheet together. I'm hoping that you'll get the Excel spreadsheet every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday just to see where everybody's line item is in terms of bringing you back up, even though it may not directly affect you, but just so you kinda see things moving. So you'll see that from me this afternoon, I just didn't want that to surprise you, just a little expect.
So Judge, Judge, are we, are we going to have another um closing speed respect to uh moving on all this?
I'm not planning on, but we could sure do it if, if necessary. This will, this will help you a lot on what's going on um other than that. And if we need to do that, we can do that.
Yeah, so maybe after the next court, Judge, let's just plan on, on another meeting for another day, or maybe that. If you'd like me to.
Yeah, okay.
I was hoping.
We'll go to that part. We'll do that. Okay. Okay, if, anything else, something else, we are, we're ready.